Thank you for your patience and good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Monday, March 9th, meeting of the Tuckahoe Village Board of Trustees. And tonight, I would like to invite Life Scout James Talata from Boy Scout Troop 353 to come to the podium and lead us in the pledge of the flag.
I pledge the eunuch. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, James. Will the deputy clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Giordano.
Present.
Trustee Quigley.
Present.
Trustee Luise.
Present.
Trustee Alfasi.
Present.
Mayor Eklund.
I am here tonight. Before we get to our special presentations tonight, which we have a couple, I have two appointments to make. The first is the appointment of Thomas Ringwald to the zoning board of appeals to fill the unexpired term of Nicholas DeSalvo, and this term is going to expire on April 1, 2019. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
I just want to thank Nick for his time and service to the zoning board, and also welcome Tom.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Quigley.
In favor.
Trustee Luise.
In favor.
Trustee Alfasi.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. The next is the appointment of Kathleen Skinner to the library board for a five-year term from April 1, 2015, to April 1, 2020. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
And I also want to thank our outgoing board member, Miki Brand. I see her husband's here tonight. He's going to talk a little bit later. She put a lot of years in on the library board. She did a great job there.
And if I could just echo that, as the liaison to the library board for this past several years, it's been a pleasure serving alongside with Miki on the board, and she's a great contribution to the efforts of the library. And as everybody knows from my monthly reports, there is a lot of great things going on at the library these days, and Miki's been an integral part of that.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Quigley.
In favor.
Trustee Luise.
In favor.
Trustee Alfasi.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. We have some great presentations tonight. We're going to first start off with a fine young man who we just saw. His name is James Talata. He is a Boy Scout with Troop 353. James is preparing to become an Eagle Scout and is going to talk to us about his Eagle Scout project tonight. Thank you, sir. Thank you. One of the great benefits of having the Boy Scouts use the Tuckahoe Community Center as their home is the fact that we have so many scouts in our troop that they're always looking for projects to do, and that means that they're always looking to actually fix up our community center and other parks and things like that. So James is going to talk to us a little bit tonight and walk us through a slide presentation There we go. And tell us who you are again.
I'm James Talata, from Troop 353. I'm a Life Scout currently. I live in Eastchester. I go to Tuckahoe High School. I'm currently a junior.
And one of the aspects of being a scout, to become an Eagle Scout, is once you've reached the rank of Life Scout, you then need to perform an Eagle Scout project, which is a large project. And I know that we've had other Eagle Scout candidates who've been before us, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but it seems that the project has to benefit, not necessarily the troop, but it's supposed to benefit the community at large. And there's a lot of different management elements to a project, and I'm glad to see. I know you've been working on this project for a while. There is the design components of it. There is the thought process of coming up with it first, which you did a great job. And then there is actually engaging all of the members of your troop. So it's, I always look at it as, they should call it an Eagle Scout management project, because that's what you are. You're the manager. So tonight, you're going to kind of walk us through each slide as to each step of what you're planning on doing. So we're excited about that.
So, the purpose, so basically what my overall project is, is I want to build a display case in the Tuckahoe Community Center to show a little bit more of the pride of Tuckahoe in a little bit more of a public area, because I imagine you don't have that many people coming into the village hall, you know, necessarily on a daily basis. So, some of the steps I have taken already is I've gotten the approval from the council to do this project. And I'm currently on step number two, getting your approval to do this project. I currently have two plans on fundraising. The first one is to do a car magnet that I will design myself and then sell to both the troop and PAC 353. I also, through our various connections in the Boy Scout troop, I got to meet the manager of Mickey Spillanes, and he agreed to do a "Dine to Donate," which is basically, a certain night is 10% or whatever percentage is of that night of the bill goes towards my project. So that's two of the fundraises I have planned.
That's wonderful.
Yeah. I also have, also talked to Judy Fix, Al Cower, and I believe I'm missing one. But I have gotten approval and, I guess, willingness to donate supplies, you know, like stain, maybe some wood, maybe discount some prices, but so...
And those are great selections. I don't mean to interrupt you here, but I'm going to just jut in here that those are great selections, because that's Cornell's Hardware, a great source, and Al Cower is Tuckahoe Paint and Glass. So that's wonderful. It's so nice that our local merchants are willing to help Boy Scouts for their projects like this.
Also, I'm planning after my project to have a ceremony of some kind to donate the display case, so, you know, a lot more, I guess, a little bit more people know about it, you know, and how, I guess, I did it for the community to benefit as a whole. Getting to the specifics about my project. On this slide are two pictures of where I plan to put the display case. They're not really that great, but I can describe it. When you walk into the community center and you see that open lounge area in the back corner, next to the window that you see, that's where I plan to put the display case. So it's, I want to make it out of wood, definitely standard to match all the, you know, all the other colors of the community center. And I'm planning on doing tempered glass, but it has been suggested to me to do Plexi glass instead of actual glass. So the dimensions, I want to make, I'm making one display case. It's going to be six feet wide, seven feet tall to match the window, and about two feet deep overall. For the top of the display case, like I said, it's going to be sliding, two sliding glass doors. It's going to be, I'm going to have shelves. I'm not sure if I'm going to do adjustable shelves yet, but it will definitely be lighted, so, you know, you can walk in and you see it right away. It catches your eye, and it'll definitely lock, so you won't have to worry about anyone breaking in or anything. For the bottom of the display case, I'm going to do two cabinet doors, total of two different spaces, so total of four doors overall. I'll have shelves in there, and it'll be locked, and that'll basically be a storage area for maybe any other things that, in the community center, that, you know, don't necessarily belong in the display case, or they're just put away for storage. So, and that's it. So Mayor Eklund, do you have any questions?
Actually, yeah, I do. I think it's, first of all, I just want to say it's a great project. I'm looking forward to it. I think you're going to become an excellent carpenter, yourself, or manager of carpenters, many carpenters, that you're going to engage from the men in your troop. And I know that you spoke to Mr. Galuzzi. He's the recreation attendant down there, and he's satisfied with the location and where it's going to be. So, look, I just, I want to thank you very much, you know. You had many options to choose for different projects, and it's always nice that you are choosing the home of Troop 353. So it's wonderful. And I'm looking forward to voting in favor of approving your project tonight, and can't thank you enough. Does any of the board members want to talk about this at all?
I just, I have a question. Did you have an opportunity to coordinate with the historical, our Historical Society? Discuss what their needs were and what they envisioned going in?
No, I haven't, but now that you mention it, it would definitely be a good idea, and I would definitely want to coordinate or talk to the Historical Society and see, you know, what ideas they may have or suggestions.
I think it would be a good idea, because they have a tremendous collection of artifacts and materials, and it would be nice to, I'm sure Mayor and Mrs. White would be more than pleased to coordinate something that is suitable for that space. I think it's a great idea.
And your timing is perfect, too, because I was just talking to them recently. They put all their information in this display case in the hallway, and they've run out of room. It'll be nice for them to put some, a display of some things that are maybe community center related, or even some of the old history that they had of the old section of Columbus Avenue, which is where the community center is. So, yeah, I think timing is perfect for that. Good suggestion.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
As their liaison, I'll bring it to their attention on Wednesday. They have a plethora of artifacts that they, I'm sure, will be more than happy to donate so that you can have, you know, really, a rotating exhibition in the community center. I mean, they just, I mean, you see what they have on display. Well, they have that much more and then some that's not on display. So I'll speak to them on Wednesday, on your behalf, if you'd like.
Thank you. I'm kind of glad to hear that we have a plethora of supplies and, I mean, not supplies, but artifacts to put in my display case as soon as it's built, so I'm happy to hear that.
Thank you, James. Wish you all the best in your project, and I just want to take a moment also to congratulate six of your scout brothers, that I had the privilege of attending their Eagle Court of Honor ceremony last weekend. And that's Derek Chung, Teneth Fairclaw, Andy Marose, Matt Ochakon, Noah Orlando, and Alejandro Urbina. So fairly soon, you'll be joining a very, very elite group. So congratulations. We're looking forward to getting this job done.
Thank you, Mayor.
Appreciate it. Thank you for coming tonight. If you want, you could take your memory stick out of that. Thank you. Well, next up, we have a brief presentation tonight by the Eastchester Irish American Social Club. They're going to talk about the upcoming St. Patrick's Day Parade, and we have a very special guest of honor here. We're two special guests of honor, I'm going to say, so.
Stephen Yuvain, 37, Hickory Hill Road, Eastchester. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, trustees. Thank you for, to the village of Tuckahoe. So here it is, Sunday, March 15th, 3:00 p.m., our 11th Annual St. Patrick's Day Parade, sponsored by the Eastchester Irish American Social Club, is stepping off from the Immaculate Conception Church parking lot at 3:00 p.m. We will be having 24 musical groups and bands. Of that 24, 11 are bagpipe bands. So if you like bagpipes, show up next week on the 15th. You really will enjoy it. We have a special grand marshal this year. It's Joseph B. Houlihan of Houlihan &amp; O'Malley in Bronxville, New York. Mr. Houlihan's family heralds from his great-grandfather from Kerry, Ireland. So many great people came from Kerry. That was self-serving. And we have shuttle buses from Lake Isle to the Immaculate Conception parking lot, which starts at 1:00 p.m., and we stop at 2:45 sharp. So if you're in the line of march, or if you want to get up front early, please do so, so we can step off right away. Wanted to thank the village of Tuckahoe. Mayor Eklund, you've always been very supportive. I want to thank you so much for your time and your support. And the village trustees, the village of Tuckahoe, the PD, the Highway Department here in Tuckahoe. And a special thanks to Father Razer of the Immaculate Conception and Assumption Churches, who has been extremely supportive of our parade. We have a mass that starts the parade, kicks it off, as is tradition and just right. And we are looking forward to somewhat of a trajectory of today's weather throughout the week, so we can have a nice day on March 15th at 3:00 p.m. So thank you, one and all come out. Patrick wants to say a little bit more about Mr. Houlihan, but again, March 15th, Sunday at 3:00 p.m. Thank you.
Thank you, and congratulations to you. I'm sure that's what we're going to hear right now. I think that's very special.
Thank you, Mayor. Absolutely. First of all, before I start, I'd like to congratulate James and all of 353. I think he deserves a round of applause for what he did tonight. Yeah. Thank you, guys. Troop 353 and the Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts, obviously, march in every one of our parades, so they're very important to us, and there are several of our members whose children have reached that honor also. Good evening, trustees of the village of Tuckahoe. Steve Yuvain and I are here tonight with good tidings and joy. Winter is over. And on behalf of the Eastchester Irish Association Club, it's 11th and its 11th Annual St. Patrick's Day Parade, we invite the good residents of Tuckahoe in joining us in celebrating the longer days and glorious sunshine of a much-needed springtime. I think we're all tired of this weather, guys. And as always, Eastchester Irish Social Club and its parade organizers are going to bring you a great day. As with Steve, I'd first and foremost like to thank the village, its police officers, Chief Kinsanza, town employees, the great Highway Department, and especially the ICS, who, we always start off our day with a very special event, which is the mass at 10:30 a.m., attended by our Grand Marshal Joe Houlihan, his aides, and our two honorees, of which we'll talk of a little bit later. And that, following that mass, we have a wonderful breakfast, which everybody's invited to. And by the way, you don't have to be Irish to be a member of the Eastchester Irish American Social Club. Hope you all know that. We have a Caro. We have quite a few wonderful Italian and other nationality members, and we invite everybody. All you need is $20 and a sense of humor. And that's it. Anything, you know, if you have a good, know how to have a good time, we'll let you in. If you don't, you know, we'll think twice about it. The parade, as Steve said, sets off on Sunday, the 15th of March, exactly six days from today, at 3:00 p.m. promptly, from the ICS parking lot up Main Street and 22, and culminating at the Lake Isle parking lot. For all information and to see, without our sponsors, this parade would not happen. The parade is self-funded. You can go to www.eastchesterirish.org, and we have, we're, not only are we green on St. Patrick's Day, but we try to be green in terms of saving the environment. So we have a virtual journal. We do not, we no longer print the journal. Gone are the days when we had 150, 200 journals this tick left over, and you're just throwing them into the recycling. Now, everything is virtual. It's online. In fact, Trustee Quigley, we're delighted that Steve, Mr. Mayor, you sent the one Irish member of the town board. We welcome the other good members of your village trustees to come and join us. But last, on Saturday night at Molina's, we had a wonderful event, which was, it changed from our norm. Typically, we have a SASH presentation three weeks before, and on the day of our parade, we have an event at Lake Isle. Well, this year, we decided to change things up, because we're all getting older. Our kids are getting older, and we don't have the staying power. We used to have to stay up till 2:00 in the morning at the end of the parade, you know, drinking a cup of tea and chatting about the day's events. So we have combined everything, or we combined everything into one event and had a wonderful time. I hope, Stephen, you had a great time last Saturday?
It was a terrific evening, yes. Great to be part of it.
And thank you, Mr. Mayor and village trustees, for the words that you bestowed upon our good Grand Marshal Joe Houlihan and my handsome partner in crime here, Mr. Steve Yuvain. We appreciate them. We really do. And everything that the town, the village, the town, has done for us. We also, this year, because of that reason, because we're not having our festivities, it allows for all of the many volunteers, we have over 75, 80 volunteers, to go to the wonderful premises of the village of Tuckahoe, whether it's Growlers, American Bistro, Tap House, Broken Bowl, and spend our hard-earned dollars and give to the coffers and the taxes of Tuckahoe, so we can pay for the policemen and the sanitation to take care of our parade.
Appreciate that.
Thank you. It's there. So it's the start...
I think I detect a little of this Irish blarney going on right now. Is that, is that true?
It's almost ending, Stephen. Hopefully, it's not too painful there, guys. I would like to say that we are celebrating our 11th event. It's the start of our second decade, and we are celebrating the life and the, of our great patron saint of Ireland and our, the saint for archdiocese, St. Patrick. It's not about a parade, guys. It's about the day, it's a holy day in Ireland. Here, it is a wonderful day, because we celebrate it with many, many parades throughout the month of March. But what really means the most to all of us, and if you attend the mass on Sunday morning, you will find it. I mean, there's nothing more uplifting as, from any, you know, I'm obviously born in the old country, in Ireland. Whether I was born there or not, if you go there, and the emotion at the end of the mass, when they play both national anthems, and I don't care what national anthem it is that goes along with the American National Anthem, it's a wonderful time, and it's a moving moment, and it's one we'd love to share with the entire community. Moving on, I would like to talk about my fellow presenter. As you, those of you who've been on the board for many years know, Steve and I have been presenting, unfortunately. I'm the long-winded one. He is much more to the point. But Steve is being honored with his wonderful and beautiful wife, Kathleen Yuvain, this year. There is no one more deserving. There's also no one more humble. For those of you who may not know Steve, you may have seen him in his shocking red hair as he coached many of his children, and he loves sports. So Steve has been coaching EIBL, TYA, CYO, lacrosse, you know, pretty much every, every sport that his children played and beyond. And the great thing about Steve is, it's not, it's not about whether you're on his team. It doesn't matter what team you're on, whether you're on Steve's team or the opposition. For Steve, it's all about the experience. And Steve coaches with a passion, with a zest for life and a positivity. And if you were a kid on his team, on the opposition, you got the same feeling when Steve was coaching on that field. He has been an inspiration for me. He's been an inspiration for multiple children in this community and in the community of Eastchester. Steve and Kathleen have been members of the Eastchester Irish for 17 years. He's been an officer of the club. His wife Kathleen has ran many events for the club. Steve and Kathleen have also been a part of the parade since inception, or should I say, a year prior, when Tony Colavita, our supervisor at Eastchester, suggested we consider the idea of a parade. It has been my honor to have Steve by my side presenting at town and village board meetings like tonight. It's been an absolute blast. For those of you who don't know Steve Yuvain, I urge you to come out on March 15th and watch as he and his wife go probably arm-in-arm or hand-in-hand or in an embrace down Route 22, because there is no one, there is no, two people that I know that have a relationship like that. It's very, very special. And Stephen, I'm sure you heard the, his wonderful speech that night, of which, you know, there are many, many men in the Eastchester Irish who wouldn't have a quiet word in his ear about what he said, because it's put us all to shame. But it is indicative of what Steve is. And I won't go on, because I'm sure he's, not only is his hair red behind me, but his face might be a little bit red, too. But I just, I think you get the idea. You know, Joe Houlihan is a very special general, general, or grand marshal. Steve is a very special man, and I've known Steve for many, many years, and I've had the fortune to have my children coached by him. I have been a part of a 51C3 corp where Steve has spoken at ICS in many years, along with myself, to raise money for the orphaned children of Swaziland. He does just so many things, including when ICS was considering building their gymnasium. Steve was one of the spearhead group that set out to plan for that event, and that's just what he is. He's always given back. His parents were born in Mayo and Galway, and as he said himself, he was lucky enough that they moved to the greatest country on earth, as I have done. Steve appreciates that, as we all do at Eastchester Irish. We appreciate this community. We appreciate the town of Eastchester and everything you guys have done for us. We try to give back. We hope you all enjoy our parade, and I thank you again for indulging me and allowing me to speak, and God bless and happy St. Patrick's Day, guys.
Well, thank you. We will enjoy that parade. It's going to be beautiful weather, as I know that the Irish eyes will definitely be smiling down upon us all. And congratulations to your committee. You couldn't have picked any better individuals for this honor.
Couldn't agree with you more. Thank you, Stephen. Thank you, everybody.
Well, that's a hard act to follow.
Very shy.
Yes, very shy. That's right. The next presentation we're going to have tonight is something that I actually asked if we could do this. I think it's time that we do this. I was at a blood drive down at the community center about a month ago, and there was the Live On New York Organ Donation Group who happened to be there. And we have Amy Persa, I know I mispronounced, Persuade? Persad, Persad, who's going to talk to us a little bit tonight about the group. It's near and dear to my heart. I'll talk a little bit about a personal experience in my family, where this organ donation program has saved the life of my sister, and we have some other members of our community who are going to talk about their experiences tonight. But Amy, I'll let you talk a little bit first about your experience, and tell us, tell us first, I guess, about the Live On New York group. Thank you.
Thank you very much for having me here today. My name is Amy Persad, and I'm a volunteer with the New York, used to be the New York Organ Donor Network, now it's Live On New York. I am a graduate student at Sarah Lawrence College. I'm studying, I'm studying health advocacy. Right now, I'm doing my capstone project at Westchester Medical Center in their Caregiver Center. So tonight, I'm going to be talking about organ donation, and I passed out to the group there some facts about organ donation. So in the United States, right now, there's 123,000, over 123,000 people waiting for an organ transplant. In the state of New York, it's over 10,000. One of the sad things, we love being New Yorkers, we love living in New York, but unfortunately, in New York, we are number 49 out of 50 as the worst in registered organ donors. So what can we do about that? We can register to be organ donors. There's several organs that are donated. We have hearts, livers, kidneys, lungs, pancreas, and intestines. Just in New York, 8,876 people are waiting for a kidney transplant, and that's the number one organ that's needed. Every 15 hours, someone in New York State is dying waiting for an organ. So here, 23% of New York State residents are registered organ donors. In the United States, the national average is 47%. So, and there's three ways that you can become an organ donor. You have to be 18 and older. You can do that at the DMV, when you register to vote, or on longlivenyork.org. So now, with these facts, I just want to tell you a little bit about why I'm so passionate about organ donation. In 1998, my one and only child, Abigail, eight years old, developed a rare virus that stemmed from strep throat, and in one month, both of her kidneys were destroyed. were destroyed. While waiting for this virus to get out of her body, she went into heart failure. So now, my nine-year-old was in heart and kidney failure. I was very thankful that I was able to give a kidney to my daughter. Um, but when I gave the kidney, because she was in heart failure, it didn't work for three months. She had to go back onto daily dialysis. Nine months later, she had the heart transplant. So in two thousand, she had the kidney. Two thousand and one, she had the heart transplant. Everything was going along fine, and because the kidney was initially damaged, because she was in heart failure, in two thousand and three, she had to have a third transplant, another kidney transplant. You cannot imagine in three years, your, your child going through three transplants. From that, she developed diabetes from her anti-rejection medication. So now, four shots a day of insulin. So now, she's an adolescent, going to college, wanting to do her own thing. She wasn't managing her diabetes properly. And to, uh, two thousand and nine, in the fall, she went back into heart failure because she wasn't managing her diabetes. Then, in January, or, I'm sorry, in the end of the fall of two thousand and nine, she needed to be listed for another heart. So that's the fourth organ. So it was two kidneys and a heart, and now she needed another heart. While she was waiting for a heart transplant, the doctors thought that it was best that she be, um, receive the mechanical heart. And on the morning of January twenty-ninth, two thousand and ten, three hours before receiving that surgery, she went into cardiac arrest and died. My daughter, Abigail, was nineteen years old. She was a full-time college student. She had a part-time job. We live in Long Island. She would even, was so proud to say she would even drive herself to the city to her doctor's appointments by herself over the bridge. She was very active, and now she was gone. And so how does one go on after this? Your only child has passed away. I decided four months later to return back to college, where I finished my bachelor's, and now in Mayo, finish my master's. So I really encourage everyone here, if you're not a registered organ donor, to please register. And I would really, really like to, um, bring this to the, to the group's attention, that this is something that's greatly needed, that people do not need to be dying with, with their organs when other people could be living.
Um, thank you very much. You know, you're, uh, your story, it's a heartbreaking story, and you told it to me at the community center that day. Um, one of the things, and I've read this fact sheet over a couple of times, I just don't understand why, or do you, is there any reason why New York has such a low participation in the organ donation program?
There's several theories. Um, one, there's, it's a very diverse population. Um, there's a lot of myths out there. There's, when they poll people, they say, "We're very interested in doing this," but they don't take the next step and actually do something about it. Um, uh, something very odd was that when we enacted the seatbelt law, there's not as many people dying in car accidents and there wasn't as many organs. There's, there's a lot of people taking mass transit. So there's, there's just lots of different, um, different things.
Mm-hmm. And as you mentioned, um, and it's on the fact sheet here, and we're gonna see if we can actually get this fact sheet up on our, uh, cable channel and our website for a little while, too. Um, but there's three opportunities, and you said it is, you can, say it again, I think it's important. It's when you're-
Three opportunities.
At the motor vehicle office.
The motor vehicle, when you register to vote, and also you can go on the Live, Live Long, longlivenyork.org website.
Okay.
And I have some cards with me tonight. I would love, yes, this is my picture of my, of my daughter. If anyone is interested in, now, this is just your saying that you're registered to, to, um, donate. So I have the cards with me this evening, if anyone. This is my daughter, Abigail.
Very beautiful, too, so.
Thank you.
Well, thank you so much for coming. We're gonna, uh, we have some people here tonight who are gonna talk about their experiences. I mentioned, um, that my family had, um, a, an experience. After many years of being on dialysis, my sister Kathy, who was a year older than me, um, uh, she lives in Florida now, but she, uh, lived her, all of her young life here, went to Eastchester School with us. Um, she, her, uh, she needed a kidney transplant, and, you know, it was just, uh, torturous for the, for, of course, for her, but for the entire family, for us to be waiting for so long. Um, she was on dialysis mul- you know, it's, it's, it's such a life-changing thing to have to go through that whole process. Um, she had a couple of, uh, close calls where she was actually brought to the hospital for a potential transplant, and, uh, for one reason or another, whether, you know, uh, she had, might have had a small virus or a cold or something like that, she couldn't get the transplant. So she finally got to the point in, uh, July two thousand and twelve, where she didn't really have much time left. And, um, she lives in southern Florida, and for whatever reason, she only had an opportunity to be able to have her transplant done in Orlando. And, uh, we were just pleased that on July third, two thousand and twelve, and I happened to be visiting family in Florida, she got the call. And my brother, I have a large family. My brother was her, um, individual, the representative, who would actually bring her to the hospital. And she had a successful kidney transplant. So it, uh, it saved her life, and, uh, you know, we're certainly, uh, you know, of course, we're very happy about that. But what was interesting to me was that day, spending that day in the waiting room with eight other families who's had loved ones whose lives were saved, too, that day, from that one individual who was an organ donor. Um, that's, you know, it's, uh, pretty moving, I'll say that much. So, um, thank you for coming. And, uh, I'd actually like to ask, we have a police officer right here on our, uh, police force. His name is Larry Rota, and I'm gonna ask him to step up because he has, uh, a pretty interesting story that you'll wanna hear as well.
Well, trust me, Mr. Mayor. How are you? Well, as you all know, on December eleventh, two thousand and fifteen, I was fortunate enough to have a kidney transplant from a perfect match, my wife Kathy. It was done at Columbia Presbyterian, um, by a team of world-class doctors and surgeons, people who travel from all over the country to come to this hospital, which is only twenty minutes from Tuckahoe. Going through with such an experience has given me the ability and desire to let as many people as I know to learn about the importance of organ donation. I'm a living example of a positive kidney transplant, which happened on December eleventh, two thousand and fourteen. And I returned to work here at Tuckahoe on January thirteenth, four weeks later. Some information I'd like the public to know about. Nearly ten thousand New Yorkers are currently waiting for an organ transplant. Only eighteen percent of New Yorkers age eighteen and over have enrolled in the New York State Donate Life Registry compared to the national average of forty-two percent. Just one organ donation of one person can save up to fifty people. Today's advances in medicine and technology have given doctors the potential of using a donated organ without having a perfect match, like I had. Advances in cross-matching and matching donors to recipients have advanced, giving doctors the ability to complete multiple transplants to multiple patients at one time. Um, as previously stated, there's several ways, easy ways to enroll, uh, to become an organ donator. One is signing up at, uh, mydmv.com during your license renewal, or if you lose your license and you wanna replace it, you can do so at that time as well. The other is to enroll, uh, directly on the New York State Department of Health website, which links to DMV, and, uh, you would receive a new license showing you're an organ donator. And it's also recommended, when you do decide to make the choice, um, God forbid something ever happened to you unexpectedly, they recommend that your family members know your wishes. If anybody or any residents have any questions, or know a family member that may be in need of a transplant or wanna speak to someone who has gone through one, or the process, please contact me anytime at the police station. I'd like to thank the village board for letting me speak on this matter. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Larry. And, uh, you know what? We're, we're just thrilled that you were able to come tonight, and, uh, we're thrilled that you're here. I think it's amazing that a month after you had your transplant, that you had boots back on the ground. To me, that is, um, you know, just think, think of all the advances that have occurred in, uh, medicine and in the transplant program over the years, and-
It's very amazing.
Oh, my-
Very amazing. I'd like to also thank the village board, as everyone, uh, and, and the village employees who wished me the best, uh, throughout the process and made contact with me, and, uh, Chief Costanzo and both my lieutenants, very, uh, helpful throughout the process.
Well, we're thrilled to have you here, and, you know, goes without saying, you can't thank your wife and I.
This is true. Thank you. Have a good night.
Um, yes. We have another amazing resident, um, and we used to call him Superman, but I'm gonna ask him to come on up. His name is Paul Bran. Uh, he lives down on Columbus Avenue, and, uh, he has a, a very interesting story to tell as well.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, board. I'm not gonna give you any numbers, 'cause you heard all the numbers. I'm gonna tell you my story. Uh, I was sick as a young baby, going back from birth. I've had a, uh, replacement in my heart. I've had a kidney, I'm not, I had all things done. I failed many tests. I had a defibrillator put in that failed twice. And finally, back in, to make the story condensed, back in two thousand and seven, they decided the only route I can go is a heart transplant. Now, I was also, my other problem was, I weighed four hundred and thirty-five and a half pounds, which was a little bit heavy, and they suggested I lose some weight. So when this whole thing started, I decided I have to lose weight. When I finally went for my transplant, I was down to about one ninety, so they were happy with that. I had a double transplant. I had a heart and a kidney transplant. I never had dialysis, but when you have a failing heart and your kidney is also damaged, they think it's damaged, you automatically are entitled to the kidney from the heart transplant. One of his kidneys comes to you as a, a bonus, as a gift. I would tell you one thing, um, I was, because I was de- I was depressed, I was hurt, and I, when I, the first person that saw me in the hospital, who was supposed to be a mentor, had gone through the same procedure, came with liquor on his breath. And I said, "This cannot happen." So from my hospital bed, I asked to talk to the administrator. They came to my room, and I said, "If I make it, I wanna start a heart group at the hospital, at Westchester Medical Center." And I, when I got out, after two weeks of, after surgery, and one setback, after two weeks left the hospital, and it took six months, but six months later, I started a heart group. Maybe once a month, we have, um, in the country right now, for Westchester Medical Center, there's been a hundred and thirty-one transplants of hearts alone, plus the others. I was the third person to get a transplant at Westchester Medical, and the first heart and kidney transplant. And I thank everybody that was involved. Uh, I also wanna make sure that people understand, do not be afraid of having to have a transplant. It's a life-saving procedure, and the only thing you have to do is follow the rules afterwards, which is the proper diet, exercising, and right now, it's been for me almost eight years, and I'm, I'm back to normal, except my sense of humor. I see the mask on the left. Since my sense of humor, I'm back to normal. Uh, and I, I also now talk to people, I visit people, and helping out to Tuckahoe. Anybody that wa- has any fear of a transplant, especially a double transplant, have any fear about going back to work, I don't care what age. I had mine, I was, I was sixty-two when I had it, which is not a kid, but it was worth the, uh, my heart is really forty-seven. I'm seventy, my heart's only forty-seven. Uh, so I said, I tell everybody, please, I, thank you for letting me speak here tonight, and transplants is so important. Taking care of your heart is so important. Everybody in this room, on their license, should all get donated. Do you, you realize that after you're gone, you have saved so many people. I have written two letters to the person that saved my life, the, I would network. The families chose not to respond, but in order for me to move on and be able to do something I'm doing, like I'm doing tonight, I had to write them to say thank you. And my ending of the letter was the following: "If ever one touch your son's son-in-law, husband's boyfriend's heart, please contact me. I will take your hand and put it on my heart, which I'm taking care of." So, thank you for letting me speak, and, uh, I wish everybody a he- a happy life and healthy life, and a heartfelt life. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. It's a nice story. And, look, I just wanna say that I'm glad that we had the opportunity to talk about this tonight. Um, you know what? If there's one person who signs up tonight, who wasn't an organ donor before tonight, and that saves a life, you know what? We should all go home tonight, feeling very good about that. So, um, thank you all for telling your stories. It was very important. Um, moving on, the next thing I, uh, wanna talk about is a, uh, very special resident that we have, we, in Tuckahoe. We're very fortunate here in Tuckahoe to have some outstanding talented residents. Um, tonight, I wanna recognize one of these residents and thank her for all of the volunteer work she has done for our community over many years. Um, Sandy Ray Square has been recognized twice this past month. First by the Westchester County Executive, Rob Astorino, and also this board for her award-winning planting designs on the Fisher Avenue Parking Lot Project. And today, as the Westchester County Board of Legislators recognized Women's History Month, Sandy was honored by the legislature with a special recognition. So I think that's, uh, very, very important, quite special. Uh, Sandy Ray Square is an environmental professional with a multidisciplinary background in land use development, including landscape architecture, land use and environmental planting, planning, civil engineering, site plan, and habitat restoration design, stormwater management, and construction administration. Boy, that's an awful lot. Uh, she is currently an environmental analyst, too, with the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation, Division of Environmental Permits, Natural Resources, which is freshwater entitled wetland permits. Sandy is a member of the Westchester County Soil and Water Conservation Board of Directors. She is also, uh, she's also a Girl Scout leader, where she focuses on environmental issues. So, uh, she's here with us tonight, and I wanna congratulate her and actually present her with a proclamation and certificate of recognition. Tuckahoe, Village of Tuckahoe, certificate of recognition presented to Sandy Ray Square for her planting designs on the, I wanna say, Award Avenue, Fisher Avenue Lot and Construction Project. And congratulations.
Thank you so much.
[applause] Congratulations. You have some space under your wall, so.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Did you wanna talk a little bit tonight?
Thank you.
Wow. Thank you so much. Um, this has been such an exciting project. Um, when Frank
DiMarco-
He's still here.
Yeah, there he is.
Um, first approached me, asking me if I was interested. Um, I think I, probably not
surprised him, but I jumped at the chance. Um, for a landscape architect who's interested in sustainability and trying to make our, our, not only our community, but of course, the whole earth, a little bit, a little bit better, this was just a project that, um, I felt was, um, so local and kind of homegrown, that it was, uh, I, I just couldn't turn it down. And so I wanted to thank Frank for giving me the opportunity to, to work on the project. And I also wanted to thank, uh, Dolph Engineering for, um, uh, coordinating with me. I did all my drawings manually, and they had to incorporate all my drawings into, into their work as well. Um, I also wanted to thank, um, one step further, as, as the project progressed in getting recognized, which it truly deserves as being a very wonderful project. Um, someone who actually did a lot for this project in getting rec- it recognized is here today, Elaine Gary. She put together a wonderful, um, presentation that allowed it, that allowed the project to be recognized through the Soil and Water Conservation Board, um, last year, a project that it really, um, again, deserved. And when it got further recognized, um, through the county, um, I think, I think it just- And when it got further recognized through the county, I think, I think it just came as a, it was a surprise, but, boy, it is, it is generally a project that is warranted. It's, and something that is so simple, it doesn't, it wasn't a big, mind-blowing project, but you can start something simple like a parking lot, and do something that makes sense both environmentally, from an economic point of view, and from a people point of view. I think that hopefully they'll, the people of this village can enjoy this parking lot. It'll help clean our water, help our stormwater management, as well as provide some very beautiful, I have to say, shade trees that will beautify that area of Tocco. So, I just wanted to say thank you very much, and hopefully this project will inspire further projects of a similar nature that our community can enjoy. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sandy.[661.12][661.12](applause) Frank DiMarco's gonna come up, and I just wanna say something. You know, Frank and I, and David Burke, we went to the award ceremony for the engineering program, where we received the Project of the Year Award. And, so, I went up to the microphone with Dolph Rotfeldt, and we talked a little bit about this project. And one of the things that I said is that, you know, gee, I mean, these are engineers. It's not like we built the Empire State Building, you know? It's a parking lot. And Dolph said something that, boy, I think I'm just gonna always remember. And this is a man who, Dolph Rotfeldt Engineering, who does, you know, civil engineering for every municipality in Westchester. And I don't know how old he is, but I know he's been doing it for a long time. And he said, and he sat with us, and he didn't just say this because he went up to the microphone, but he said it when we were sitting down at the table. He said, "This project is the most important project he feels that he's ever worked on." And I thought that was fascinating for him to say that. And I said, "Why?" And he said, "You know, it's just really important." He said, "Your municipality, it's a very dense community, and this project, being so close to the Bronx River," he said, "you incorporated so many features and landscaping design that you participated in, and green features, and electric charging station." He said, "It just has all the food groups of a great project." And he said, "It was the most important project he's done." And I, I was really taken back by that, so. But anyway, this is the man here who made sure that it got done, so I wanna thank you too, Frank.
Again, none of this could've got done without the assistance of everybody involved, especially Sandy and Elaine. But I can't begin to express my gratitude for all that Elaine has done for the village, I'm sorry, Sandy. And I would be remiss if I don't mention Elaine, and the, you know, Tree Committee and Environmental Committee. The work that they, they really do for us here, that's really unrecognized until, you know, we were up here mentioning all the work that they do. You know, just to mention a couple of projects, you know, the Fisher Avenue Native Center. All this has been designed and landscaped by Sandy and the members of the Tree Committee and the Environmental Committee. The Fisher Avenue Parking Lot, of course, you know, she was just recognized for that. But it all began years ago when we started our GIS and GPS information, beginning to map all of our infrastructures within the village, our trees, within the, you know, private lines. They mapped all of this. They mapped our trees, our sewers, our stormwater infrastructure, and we now have presently all this GIS information. Thank you to Sandy Ray, and our committee, Elaine, and the Environmental Committee, and our Tree Committee. But I could be up here all night expressing my gratitude, you know, for all they've done for me, and for the Village of Tocco's residents. And, you know, always when there's a project coming around, whether it be the Fisher Avenue Parking Lot, or the 50 small projects that we've done within the village where I needed a landscape design, Sandy was always welcome. Thank you.
So, again, congratulations, Sandy, and thank you very much for, for all the work that you've done for the village. Appreciate it. We have no public hearings tonight. I'm gonna move on through our agenda. That's gonna bring us to the adoption of minutes, which is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of February 9, 2015. Do I have a motion for that?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor?
Trustee Quigley.
In favor?
Trustee Luisi.
In favor?
Trustee Alfassi.
In favor?
In favor. Do we have any correspondences this month? Actually, I received an email, the Board and I received an email this month, from a 12-year-old Eastchester resident, who is a student of the Martial Arts School down on Marbledale Road, and he was expressing concern on the remediation of the property which is behind the school. So, I will forward a memo, the memo, to the Chairman of the Planning Board, which is the lead agency for the proposed development of that property. So, we'll make sure that he gets that. And that's it. So, that's gonna bring us to the first opportunity to address the Board on anything on our agenda. Anybody wants to talk about it? Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Tocco Board of Trustees, Ron Gallo, 58 Hill Street, and also Chairman of the Zoning Board of Appeals. I came to speak tonight on the appointment of Tom Ringwald, but before I go to that, I just wanna briefly run a couple of things. And I wanna applaud Sandy for her great work, and it is clearly something that makes this village what it is. I, when I've come to the Board meetings before, I've made something in my past, you know, it bears repeating. You know, when I was young here in this village, someone said to me, I was actually Tom Dougherty, he said, "Do you like living here?" And I said, "Yeah, it's, it's great living here." And he said, "Do you think it's a great place to live?" I said, "It's fantastic." And he said, "Do you think it happened all by itself?" And I thought for a minute, and I looked at him, and he said, "No, it didn't. It happened because of people volunteered and gave their all to the village, and made it the great place that you are now, you know, seeing what it is." And that meant a lot to me, and it got me to volunteer, and, and I'm sure things like that got people like Sandy and many other people to volunteer. So, I just wanna encourage people who may tune in, who are new to the village, and say, you know, "We're watching this wonderful village in our little Board meetings and public hearings, et cetera," and they scratch their heads. And what makes it so great is, is that everyone getting involved, and we need future people to consistently get involved, as Tom, who I'll get to speak about in a second. I also, if I can just take this time as a personal privilege, as a zoning board member, to say that things on our zoning board are going very well. We have a great working zoning board, and we've been working very hard dealing with the complicated issues of zoning, and we're thrilled with the way things are going, and I'm thrilled with my board. And we, you know, hope that the Board, the Village Board is happy with us. And I can just tell you that our Board is, you know, working diligently and very serious in every issue that comes up. So, there is a tremendous amount of effort that is being put in by our Board, and it's going to work out great, and I'm very confident in everything that will come about, that the Village Board will be happy, and the public will be happy. And we have our, our public hearings at the zoning board, so anyone, I encourage residents who are concerned about issues that are taking place, or developments that are taking place around them, I wanna encourage them to come to the zoning board, to come to the public hearings, speak their mind, and let us know. It's very important to us, so that we can evaluate the public's opinion on anything before we make our decisions, and that assists us. We've had some, you know, fantastic individuals who were on the zoning board of the legal venue, and I'm referring to former zoning board member Alfassi, and former member Nick DeSalva, who was great legal minds, and were very helpful, and assisted us great. And we're looking forward to Tom. I want this boy to know that, that I've met with Tom, and we've discussed many issues, and he is clearly hard-charging forward, and wants to understand it and learn it. And I appreciate the Village Board for bringing him forward. And he has met with us, and met with the Building Department, and legal, as far as learning the ropes and everything that's involved. And what's occurred is that we, we were just in a gray area of, you know, recommendation for appointment versus his appointment. And while he wasn't required, we had a special work session because of the amount of applications that are coming up. So, we had a special work session, and while it wasn't necessary and required upon him to attend, he did attend as a resident, and just listened quietly and observed, and came to the onsite applications for inspections, and observed it all. And so, I was very impressed and pleased to see that he would make that effort.
And he still volunteered anyway.
I know. Well, let me tell you, you know, maybe some people might've told him that it was only one meeting a month, but turns out that, you know, maybe a little bit more than that, but he was, you know, right there, listening, absorbing. And in the, in the meeting with the Building Department, he was asking questions to, you know, understand what his role as a zoning board member would be, and I was thrilled that he would do that. On a, I don't get a lot of time, opportunity to come to the Board and do a, you know, formal report, but I just will take this opportunity to say that, you know, things on Marbledale are looking great, and there was a lot of effort, worked with the Denning family on their rental, and due to the complications of the zoning laws, and there was a big effort put forth by the Building Department, Legal Department, and this zoning board to work with the Denning, and the Denning family, which has a long history of ownership of properties and residents in here. And I'm pleased to announce, or let you know, that there was a rental agreement made, from what I understand, by the Denning family and another business on Marbledale, so that, you know, the, the property that's owned by Denning, from what I understand, and I don't wanna go 100% on this, but I'm fairly certain that I'm correct, that there was a rental made there. So, we, we have that property rented in conjunction with another business there. So, it works out to something that was, to the benefit of everybody, and these zoning board worked hard on it, and the Denning family was, was very understanding and workable with us. So, we're really pleased that that transition is slowly being made in a, you know, to a variety of businesses on Marbledale. Mayor, if I can ask you, my understanding that there's another rental being made by another AAA company on Marbledale, Hertz, is that correct?
Yeah, actually, there's gonna be a ribbon cutting for Hertz, which is opening up their new location right next to Rocco's Autobody, which is across the street from the new ice skating rink, so in that whole section there. I think it's the location where Marciano used to be for many, many years. So, yeah, that's a, that's a good tenant, that's for sure. That's a good business to have.
When we get a AAA name coming to Tocco, and many people were, you know, the, the hotel is a AAA tenant, and many people questioned, you know, will AAA tenant, a name brand like that really come to Tocco? Will it really happen? You know, it hasn't been in the past, but that is happening. And now, to hear another super-name brand, like a company like Hertz, I mean, I'm, as a resident and Chairman of the zoning board, thrilled to hear that a company such as Hertz is gonna, you know, come here and decide to invest in this village, just, just shows that this is a village on the move, in my opinion, and on, on a growth, you know, trajectory, which is good for everybody. It helps our tax base, it helps, I believe, future, future prospective tenants and landlords who currently own properties, or may be considering owning properties, and saying to themselves, "Wow, look, another AAA tenant is, is signing a lease in Tocco." It shows that we're just a great, a great village, and the leadership that, you know, this mayor and this Board has shown, along with past, and it's, it's, it's something that I believe this Board has followed, you know, the lead on in the past and continued, and it's a result, you know, when you see, you know, a Hertz coming here now on top of Marion, I mean, I, I just couldn't be happier.
Well, thank you, and thank you for coming tonight. I know you came to talk a little bit about your new member. One of the things that, in making an appointment, and thinking about who should be on a zoning board or a planning board, one of the things that I've always thought about since becoming the mayor is, I feel it's important that we have, of course, a whole cross-section of people who have different occupations. I think that's important. But what's also important is that we have people who live in different areas of the village. It is a small village, but it's, it's not maybe necessarily the greatest if you have everyone who lives on the same street, maybe on the north end of Tocco, because they may not be able to relate to issues that are just, you know, daily issues maybe on the south end of the village. So, Mr. Ringwald lives up on Hollywood Avenue. We haven't had representation from that street in a while, so I think that's gonna be a big benefit. You know, he, he looks at things maybe with a different set of eyes than somebody who lives up where I live, up, and one of your other members who lives up near the Eastchester border. So, so I think that's a big benefit, and I wanna thank you for all the work that you've done, and appreciate it. Thank you for coming down tonight.
Well, it's a pleasure, and, and I'm very confident Tom's gonna bring a different perspective, as you say, and he's gonna add, you know, major plus to the Tocco zoning board of appeals.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. That's gonna move us on to our resolutions, and our first resolution tonight is Resolution Number One, which is approving James Tilata's Eagle Scout project. Do I have a motion for that resolution?
So moved.
And do I have a second for that?
Second.
And I just wanna congratulate James. Your project has been approved, and we are thrilled to see that get underway down there at the community center, so congratulations.[1639.83][1639.83](applause) Oh, yes, yeah. Well, that's true. We are gonna have to vote, you know that? Look at that, I'm ahead of myself. So, let's take a roll call on that, James, just to make sure. You're sweating in the back, I can see.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Quigley.
In favor.
Trustee Luisi.
In favor.
Trustee Alfassi.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. I knew you had it, James.[1662.51][1662.51](laugh) Thanks again. Appreciate it.[1664.51][1664.51](applause) Great job presenting tonight. Resolution Number Two is scheduling a public hearing on a proposed local law entitled "A Local Law Concerning an Amendment to Section 8-1 of the Village of Tocco's Zoning Ordinance of 2001 Regarding Planning Board." Do I have a motion for that?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
And I'm gonna ask Deputy Mayor if we talk about that a little bit on our.
Thank you, Mayor Eklund. As the liaison for the, the Planning Board, we've had several discussions over the past months about the constituency of the Board, and what we can do to increase and improve its efficacy. And what we've looked at really is, from a historical perspective, that Board was made up of five members, from time immemorial to the present, with the exception of, I believe it was about six years ago, there was a change to making it a seven-member Board, and it's been a seven-member Board to the present. It's our feeling that, a couple of things to consider. When you have a seven-member Board, you need more members present in order to have a quorum. And what that results in is an opportunity for meetings to not be able to bind, meetings to be adjourned, and what we've perceived to be a decrease in efficacy. So, what we would like to do, and what this proposed local law is attempting to do, is to bring the Board back down to its historical five-person membership. And really, what we envision here is not so much that we are going to take away from the ability of a vibrant the ability of a, of a vibrant debate with the people who are on the board, but more to be able to make sure that with five, we have a quorum with three, we have the ability to have ad hoc members who can then sit in in the event that a permanent member is unable to attend. And we believe that this way, we will be able to increase, moving forward, the, the board's ability to, to evaluate and make recommendations. So that's really what this is about.
Well said. Thank you very much. It's one of the things that I felt some years ago that we should be doing. And in order for this to occur, you have to have either vacancies on the board or resignations. So we've recently had resignation by one of the board members who's also decided to stay on as an ad hoc member. He's not able to commit to every monthly meeting. So, but his input on the board is vital. So I spoke to him, and he is going to stay on as an ad hoc member, and that's very important. So we have five members on the board. In order to make this officially a five-member board, we actually have to pass a law to do that. So that's what we're doing. We're scheduling a public hearing for next month, and then we will vote on adopting that. Anybody else want to comment on this, or it's pretty self-explanatory?
I'll just wait until the, the public hearing.
Sure, absolutely.
But, but to your point, Trustee Giordano, unfortunately, that happened this year, where, where the board had to cancel a meeting because they did not have a, a quorum. Not anyone's fault, it just, again, because of the numbers.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Quigley.
In favor.
Trustee Luise.
In favor.
Trustee Alfassi.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Resolution Number Three is accepting a donation from the Generoso Pope Foundation in the amount of $14,215.54 for Winterfest events that were held on December 6th and 7th of last year. Do I have a motion for that?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
I want to thank David Pope very much for that contribution.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Quigley.
In favor.
Trustee Luise.
In favor.
Trustee Alfassi.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Resolution Number Four is committing to 50% matching funds for certain capital improvement projects through the Community Housing Infrastructure Investment Program. Do I have a motion for that?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
And this is actually a program that the county has set up. They have $5 million that they're going to sprinkle amongst municipalities. And we were one of the municipalities who had been pre-approved for some CDBG projects that unfortunately were not federally funded due to the bickering on the housing settlement issue. So there's $5 million that's available. We're certainly hoping that we're going to be able to get our portion of that. And if we do, it's going to require us to kick in a 50% matching contribution. So we're hoping we can get it. If we do get it, there's two projects we're looking at doing. One is sanitary sewer relining, which is critical in a 100-plus-year-old municipality like Toccoho. And in addition to that, there is another sidewalk restoration project along Columbus Avenue. So we're crossing our fingers, and we're happy to kick in half of the money if we can get the other half for free.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Quigley.
In favor.
Trustee Luise.
In favor.
Trustee Alfassi.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Resolution Number Five is awarding bids for municipal surplus equipment. Do I have a motion for that?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
And I know we had, Greg, you were going to talk a little bit about that.
Yes.
I know you had some phenomenal money came for some of the things that we sold.
Thank you, Mayor. Several years back, when I first took office, I was made aware of the fact that the Police Department had not had any new vehicles replaced through the course of four budget cycles. And at that time, as I was preparing work on one of my first budgets, one of the items that jumps off the page is the amount of money that was being spent on the maintenance cost to maintain the fleet. With that being said, it, this, members of this board undertook a dedicated capital improvement project, and what we've done is we've replaced the fleet in, in small increments. And the reason why we do this is, when you buy a new police vehicle, it's under a warranty for three years, which minimizes the maintenance cost to the village. The second big advantage to this process, or to adopting this type of program, is after three years, you're able to sell the car and recoup a substantial amount of money that you've spent to purchase that vehicle three years earlier. In this case, this resolution is pertaining to a vehicle that we purchased back in 2012 that we are now, that has now been sold on eBay for the amount of $13,107. And strangely enough, it was purchased by someone in Germany. So it only goes to show you, you know, there's a lot to be said for what this board has done in undertaking this type of, of program and making sure that our vehicles are new. We don't have to, our maintenance cost has dropped dramatically. And now what we're able to do when we sell a vehicle is we're able to put it back towards the purchase of a new vehicle. So thank the chief for his hard work on, on getting us started on this several years back. And of course, I'd be remiss in not mentioning Sergeant Rota, who explained what's involved in, you know, maintaining a fleet of vehicles. When you have police cars out there 24 hour, 365 days a year, 24 hours a day running constantly, the wear and tear is quite dramatic compared to the vehicles that you and I drive. So thank you and congratulations on, on this nice purchase, nice sale on eBay. And among other things that were sold as well, if I may, Mayor, is we've, the Police Department also was able to sell some of the bikes that we used during the warm months of the year. And we've recouped money from those sales as well, so. Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, I was, I was really taken back by how much money we got for that police car. As you said, it's so true. You know, you have a vehicle for three years, you're really, now your maintenance line goes down to not nothing.
Practically nothing, yeah.
Very little, and you're getting all this money back on resale. So thanks to the chief. I know we kind of went astray from this program. It was set up many, many years ago, and, you know, when the terrible economy hit, you know, we're scrambling to try and save a nickel everywhere. And he told us, hey, just wait and see, and we saw. So we're back on track, and please remind this board and future boards, chief, if we ever start to go astray again. Thank you.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Quigley.
In favor.
Trustee Luise.
In favor.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Now we have Resolution Number Six, which is authorizing door-to-door solicitation by Kevin Jones, Jamaica Legrand, and Rodney Ridgel of Synergy Management as authorized door-to-door agents for Verizon, offering Verizon file services for a period of six months. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
Opposed.
Trustee Quigley.
I'm voting in favor on the ground that we don't have an established policy of this kind of door-to-door solicitation. I'm very sympathetic with Trustee Giordano and I think a couple of the members of the board. But until we have sort of a village policy on door-to-door solicitations, this strikes me as a, sort of, we're targeting one particular company and penalize, not penalize, but denying them the right to do something that others have done. So for that long, convoluted reason, I am voting in favor of this.
And too, thank you, Trustee Quigley. And just to clarify my vote, which is probably very similar to the rationale, to, to your rationale, we don't have a policy. We had an original petition for one person soliciting for three months. We now have three people for six months. My feeling is that we need to regroup. We need to figure out what's reasonable. We don't want people to be knocking on doors and disturbing the peace on a, on a regular basis. And I think we need to, we can regroup. I'm willing to reconsider some type of policy that I think is, is well-thought-out and, and as Trustee Quigley said, is also consistent.
Well, not to sound like a broken record, I have, I think I said this two months ago, I've consistently voted against a for-profit soliciting any type of business in the village. And I'm going to reiterate what I said two months ago. The reason why I'm against this particular application is, in the case of Verizon, and this is according to the Wall Street Journal, they have spent in the beginning of 2014, between the months of January 1 and June 30, four and 100, I can't even read my own writing, $408 million plus on just TV advertising that doesn't take into account what they've spent on print advertising. So one of my reasons for this is, I think they've targeted their audience, and as Deputy Mayor Giordano said, it's one of those issues that we don't need to have people banging on residents' doors at whatever time of the day or night it may be. So for that reason, I am opposed.
Again, not to belabor the issue, but because we did, I believe, grant a peddler's license, so to speak, a solicitation license to that one person for Verizon, I'm going to be voting no to this. But in, in addition to that, it's, to Trustee Luise's point, this is not a vendor who is without means. This is a vendor, Verizon, who does tremendous advertising. All of us here know the name Verizon. If this was Joe's Shoe Repair, perhaps my vote would be different. Perhaps it wouldn't. But certainly for a vendor like Verizon, who's, we're well aware of their programs, they have TV advertisements, et cetera, I don't think a pressurized sale at my door or at anyone else's door is appropriate at this time.
Mayor Eklund.
Boy, we've had a lot of conversation on this. I'm going to be consistent in my vote on this type of application in this year and in the past, and I'm going to vote in favor. And my reasoning is primarily what Trustee Quigley said, which is, I don't want to look at this and be very selective. I would much rather vote consistently, as I have in the past, but make sure that we go ahead and take a hard look at whether we should be making this offer in the future. So as both Deputy Mayor Tom Giordano and Trustee Quigley said, something we have to look at. So I am a yes on that. And that's going to bring us to Resolution Number Seven, which is authorizing the approval of vouchers. We have to pay some bills in the amount of $575,299.62. Do I have a motion for that?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
And I will just mention that the largest bill we paid this month was for that beautiful new garbage truck. I say beautiful garbage truck. Well, it is, I guess if you're in this, in this racket. It costs us $213,060. And if you haven't seen it traveling in front of your house picking up your garbage, you will soon. It's a beautiful truck.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Quigley.
In favor.
Trustee Luise.
In favor.
Trustee Alfassi.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Resolution Number Eight is scheduling a public hearing on the tentative budget for fiscal year June 1, 2015 to May 31, 2016. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Quigley.
In favor.
Trustee Luise.
In favor.
Trustee Alfassi.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. And finally, Resolution Number Nine, it's not on your agenda, we just added it tonight, which is approving the use of the Toccoho trolley for the Irish Parade, for the St. Patrick's Day Parade. On Sunday, March 15, the village will be providing the driver for this. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Quigley.
In favor.
Trustee Luise.
In favor.
Trustee Alfassi.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Very happy for that. And that is going to bring us to our departmental reports to the board. And as always, we are going to start with our Chief of Police, Jonathan Costanzo.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the board. I just want to comment on the, on the presenters of talking about organ donations. I just want to commend all of the speakers for their passionate pleas, and, and I ask everyone to, to take their words wholeheartedly. I think it's a very important program, and I just want to comment on Sergeant Rota. When we talked about the fact, he credited his doctors in modern medicine for being back in four weeks, but it's really a credit to him, his character, his work ethic, that he was back so shortly also. So, you know, congratulations to everyone that spoke, and I hope that their message is well-heard throughout the village. Prior to coming to tonight's meeting, I participated in an active shooter training. It was a unified training with Eastchester and Bronxville Police Departments, as well as Tocco members. I just want to commend the, the people who organized and put this lesson plans together with Sergeant Andrew Zerolnik of the Tocco Police Department, Sergeant Rich Rosenberg from Eastchester Police Department, and Sergeant Nick DeYoung of the Bronxville Police Department. It was a very comprehensive training program. It started off with a classroom component, that, that's what I sat in on. It was followed up by a practical component later on in the evening. There's still training as we speak. It was held at Ann Hutchinson School. It was a great opportunity to get all three departments together to train. We've, we've done this training in the past. This was, again, the most comprehensive of the training. It included an incident command component that Bronxville Chief Chris Archioli taught, excuse me. It included a tactical emergency casualty care program taught by an evac paramedic, who also happens to be a New York City police officer. It was, it was great training, timely in that, you know, addressing issues that are happening across our nation, unfortunately, and preparing our members for worst-case scenario. So again, thanks to everyone that put it together and for the expertise in, in their training. I just want to remind residents that alternate side of the street parking will be going into effect over the next several days and weeks. As we start flipping the snow zone signs, we'll be installing the alternate side parking so we could get the street sweeper back out and, and cleaning up the streets. So just look out for that over the next days and weeks. We will certainly issue warnings the first week or so that the signs are up, but I ask our residents to please pay attention to those changes. And that's my report for this evening.
And I can't say how nice that sounds. Thank you, Chief. Frank? We have a lot of public works talk, I'm sure, but I know we don't have to talk about snow because that was the last of the snow, right?
I just want to mention, the topic of being an organ donor, it was just mentioned in my house just a couple of weeks ago, and my daughter, one of my daughters had signed on. And it's, I'm also contemplating doing the same, so just to let you know. Okay. As far as DPW, snow, I'd rather not mention snow. It seemed to have been a topic of conversation for the past couple of months, even though I predicted no snow, we got snow. But moving forward, the new topic of conversation is, is potholes. You know, typically, in the past, with the past few years, the blacktop plants have always been open through the winter months, but February's been such a cold, cold month that they decided to close. So we have, we had access to absolutely zero blacktop. Just to let the residents know, I know we've been getting calls along the way, but realistically, I don't think we were given the opportunity to go out there and fill these potholes until today and yesterday. But we have, we started going out today, and we should be almost completed by the end of the week, filling most of the potholes in, in Village of Toccoho.
Can I ask you a question on that?
Sure.
In New York City, they have a, you can actually dial a number just to report a pothole. And, you know, they give you these reports of how many thousands of calls they're getting for filling the potholes. And I was thinking about that as I was driving home today through the landmine of Middlelet Avenue. And do we need to do that? Do we want our residents to call your office? Or are we so small that, do you have somebody who's actually driving every street and making a list of where all these potholes are?
making a list of where all these potholes are?
You know, correct. You know, the village is so small that we basically know where all the potholes are, and we just drive around through every block, even though there are isolated potholes in certain areas. We, when we get to the main roads, after we do the main roads, we drive through the residential roads. So, we just about get them all, hopefully. You know, after this week, if we've missed one, you know, please do call us.
Great.
That's all I have.
That's all you got, huh?
That's it.
All right, well, no more snow, Frank, thank you.
Okay.
Appreciate that.
Obviously, I think you're going to mention that April 3rd, we're going to be closed on Friday for Good Friday.
That's correct.
We're going to be picking up garbage that Thursday.
Okay.
For the residents to know.
Excellent. And tonight, we have our librarian here. I'm going to ask Swadish if she'd come on up and, library director, and please talk to us a little bit about what's going on down the library.
Good evening, Mayor Eklund and trustees. It's my pleasure to be here, and I want to thank Mickey Brand for serving on library board, for her time and the support, and also I'd like congratulations to Kathleen Skinner, who is here on her new appointment as a library trustee, and I look forward to working with her. And I wanted to share some good news on behalf of the library. The library is the recipient of two grants that we feel will have a positive impact on the community that we serve. First, we received a grant from the Community Fund of Bronxville, Eastchester, Tuckahoe, in the amount of four thousand three hundred to assist us in providing children and teen summer reading programs, especially science-related programs, computer classes and laptops. I want to thanks to the Community Fund of Bronxville, Eastchester, Tuckahoe for their support, and also thanks to our children's librarian, Ellen Tenenbaum. In addition, we are also going to receive a state construction grant of ten thousand two hundred and fourteen dollars to upgrade the lighting to energy-efficient LED lights for the library. Just want to say, some of the new program, we just started a new storytime in Italian for the children, which is going to be on March 12th at 1:00 a.m., 1:00 p.m., for ages three to six years old. And also, in the children's room, we are going to do the children's, it's called Straw Twigs and Bricks, Let's Build. As all of you know, they're the core curriculum in every school now, so we are trying to introduce more and more science-related programs to our children. And this is going to be by Westchester Children's Museum, and Tuesday, March 31st, at 4:00 p.m., for children ages five to 10 years old. We have a local children author, Joanne Ruus, who is going to be at the library on Friday, April 17th, at 11:00 a.m., and her new book is out, and this is during the National Library Week. And its program is open for children ages two to six years old. And during the National Library Week, which starts on April 16th, we have our local adult author, lives in Tuckahoe, name is Gloria Goldwright. She will be here at the library and talk about her brand-new book. It's called The Bridle Chair, and her books will be available for signing, so she will be at the library. And also, we are going to celebrate Fourth Annual Arbor Day, which is also, Sandy's in charge of that program, going to be on Saturday, April 18th, at 10:30 a.m. And you can come, and people can come and listen to the stories, and they have some seeds which they can take, children can take home and then plant the seed. Also, we are going to have for adults, it's a Presidential Library Program, where the Dr. Raymond Gesselbrecht, who is an archivist for the Frank D. Roosevelt Library, he's going to be at the library to present a lecture and slideshow on his experience working at the East Treasure American Island. And this program is going to be on Thursday, March 12th, at 2:00 p.m. And also, we are going to have a memoir gathering, which is, this is our third year going to have this program, where the people who are participants of this memoir group, they are going to read their personal narratives. And this program is going to be on Saturday, March 21st, at 11:00 a.m. And also, for adults, we have an Indian cookbook author, her name is Rekku Bhattacharya. She will be at the library on April 1st at 6:30 p.m., and where she's going to talk about her cookbook, and there will be food sampling, and also talk about the spices and their health benefits. And April 8th, we are going to have a program about credit reports and scores, which is brought to us by Green Path Debt Solution, a nonprofit credit counseling organization. And this program is on Wednesday, April 8th, at 7:00 p.m. I think that's it for the library.
It's, you know, you just took away his whole report.
I, that's true. Actually, I have Kathleen Skinner in the library, if she wants to say a few words.
Absolutely, and thank you very much for giving your report. You know, I'm sad this year, I'm going to miss the memoirs. That is one of the greatest things, that I participate in the library. I urge anyone, I'm going to be away that weekend, March 21st, so I'm sad that I'm not going to be there, because it is fantastic. So, I urge everyone, please go on down and take a seat and bring a box of Kleenex, because sometimes some of those stories, some are just hilarious, but some are very, very emotional too, so. Kathleen, thank you so much for joining the library.
Oh, well, I joined a long time ago. Actually, I, first I wanted to introduce myself. I'm Kathleen Skinner, and I live at 14 Westview Avenue. And, Mr. Mayor, I'm just very honored to become a member of the Board of Trustees of the library. It's going to be my great honor to work with the trustees. And on a personal note, I wanted to say that about 10 years ago, I actually moved to the Village of Tuckahoe, and one of the first places that I went to visit was the library. And fortunately, that day, Swadish was there, welcomed me, and immediately told me about the book club, and invited me to join, and which I did, and I've been a member ever since, and we have the most fabulous book club. I mean, it's so popular that we have it, we have two sessions when we, you know, now Lisa is in charge. And I just want to say that Swadish and her staff, they're very professional, they're very capable, welcoming, and really, the residents of Tuckahoe are just so fortunate to have the kind of library that we have. You've just heard all the programs and all the activities. You go in there at any one time, and you'll see little toddlers with books, and being a former first-grade teacher, I'm thrilled when I see that. But then again, it's the whole gamut, and it's just a treasure that I hope all the residents take advantage of. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you, and it's for great individuals like yourself who participate and volunteer your time. You're on a great board. Ginger Crosby, she heads up that board, and I want to thank you again very much. Mr. Galuzzi. We're going to hear about what's going on down at the community center. We know there's going to be a nice new display case now down there.
Mayor, good evening, board. Incidentally, I'd like to congratulate James, who I did meet with on his Eagle Scout project, and it just blew me away. He's worked so hard on it, made so many new and interesting contacts, and I see it very relevant, not only to the village, but to the community in its entirety. I'm here tonight, really, to let the village know, and anybody else who's watching, that we have a new location coming April 4th for our Tuckahoe Easter egg hunt. And that's important, because naturally, people have to be more aware of a new location, and the fact that we've had it at Circuit Park for so long, and then up here at Village Hall. Well, now, we're going to be at Parkway Oval Field, so if everybody can make a note of that, and that date is Saturday, April 4th. The hunt will begin promptly at 11:00 a.m., and the age groups are from 1 to 9. So, we urge moms and dads to get their kids together, put it on the schedule, and bring their kids down to Parkway Oval, Parkway Oval Field, April 4th, for our annual Easter egg hunt. It's brought to you by the Village of Tuckahoe, of course, and principal sponsor being the General Sir Pope Foundation. Now, we have entertainment as well, that'll keep the kids busy. Of course, we have a lot of actors down there, two or three actors dressed as bunnies and, you know, flowers, and keeping the kids interested and entertained, and so it should be quite a nice day down there. If you have any questions, naturally, it's 2310229. You can call me at the community center, and we'll talk details.
Thank you, John. I know one of the reasons, or the primary reason, why we moved the location was, it's just incredible how many people come to the Tuckahoe Easter egg hunt. So, it almost seemed like it was getting dangerous to have it on the front lawn of Village Hall for one age group, and even down at Circuit Avenue Park, that's a big park, but, I mean, so many people were standing in the street. I mean, just the spillover was enormous. So, we're going to give this a try. I mean, anybody who's been down to our firework show, which is where Parkway Oval is, it's a huge field, and I want to thank the town of Eastchester. They're going to, they always do a great job of keeping the property clean and maintained down there. So, the Boy Scouts are going to help out, and they're going to help the Easter bunny in spreading some eggs for the young kids, and let's just pray for good weather.
Well, we have a lot of eggs, so hopefully we'll have a lot of kids.
10,000 eggs, I hear. 10,000 eggs, that's amazing.
I accept it.
And they're gone in two minutes, they're gone.
John, just a quick question. Do we separate age groups?
In the past, we have. We've done ages 1 to 5, and then 5 to 9, and separated the time brackets.
Like a fighting chance, huh?
Yeah, actually. I think this time, we have a lot of rooms, so we're going to incorporate the age groups together and let them have at it. So, it's Parkway Oval Field, Saturday, April 4th, for our annual Easter egg on ages 1 to 9. It begins at 11:00 a.m. Thank you.
Thank you. Camille, anything you want to talk about tonight? Gary?
On the court side, I do have one thing.
Okay, sure. Yeah, we don't hear too much about courts.
No.
Which is nice, but it's more of a...
I think a lot of residents don't realize that there's a 48-hour parking rule. So, even though you have a resident permit sticker, you're exempt from the two- to four-hour zones, does not exempt you from the 48-hour rule. So, you have to move your car every 48 hours, regardless of whether you have that sticker or not.
So, don't park your car and just walk away for a week.
Yes, that's correct.
Gary, I've had some angry residents knocking on my door over that, over the past couple of weeks, as you may know. And I wanted to be able to, and I think this is a good forum for you, to articulate the rationale for the 48-hour rule, as opposed to just the two-hour parking.
Right, and I think I try to tell people when they come in and say, oh, why did I get this ticket? I have my permit and all this other stuff. So, I try to explain that the law's really there to protect them also, protect them from somebody parking in front of their house, taking up their parking spot, and just leaving the car there indefinitely, forever. And so, that, it protects these people, it protects everybody. So, even though it might inconvenience somebody at one time, where they have to get out and move their car within that 48 hours, it's going to protect them in the long run, so cars aren't just parked there forever, in front of their house.
So, and here to play devil's advocate, what if some, you know, why isn't it deterred enough that they get ticket after ticket, that then multiplies, and then have, you could potentially have the car impounded, rather than, you know, in other words, the argument that I have gotten, and is hard to refute, is when it's snowing out especially, some people are not able to actually, you know, dig their car out. What should they do then? In other words, should they call, should they call the police department? What's the best strategy there? Because you do have, you do have that situation that arises.
Yeah, I would defer that question to the police department, whether they would give an exemption to that car. I believe if there's a situation where that person can't move it for some reason, I'm sure the police department would extend a courtesy to that person, maybe give an exemption.
Handoff is going to the football player right here.
Did I start something bad here?
As the village attorney said, the main reason is to protect homeowners, to protect people that live in areas near high-rise apartments, where people sometimes warehouse their cars for, you know, not 48 hours, but literally weeks on end. And so, what generally happens is that we base our 48-hour complaints enforcement on complaints. Ninety percent of the time, it's based on complaints. The only time it's not based on complaints is following a large storm, and we don't wait 48 hours. We generally wait double that, or 72 hours plus, when we see that cars have been continually buried in snow, haven't been moved. It's a way for us to just go around the village and see where we think people are warehousing their cars. Sometimes it's a car that no one uses very often, that, you know, they want to put it up for sale, which really is not fair to the rest of, you know, their neighbors particularly. But to the point is, if there's an elderly person who just can't get out and get their car shoveled out, and they're waiting for a relative or someone to come, an able-bodied person to come that may not be able to come for several days, if they give us a call, certainly we'll extend that courtesy. The purpose of the law, and it's really not just the Tuckahoe law, it's a state vehicle and traffic law, the 48-hour rule is that cars are just not left abandoned on the roadways.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you, Chief.
Thanks, Gary.
No problem. You should have seen my door.
I can imagine.
I have to thank Chief for that.
David Burke, our village administrator.
Yeah, Mayor, I have a few items to report on, but I think one of the, some of the biggest things that we're doing in the village for the past month that I've been working on is some of the financial issues that we've been working on, and I think that you're going to speak to that. So, maybe I'll just kind of hold off on that, and, you know, we'll let you speak about that. Real quick, a lot of work, or not a lot of work, but some work is being done at the Marble Dale site, where the hotel is proposed down there. So, some contractors are going in there and getting soil samples. So, if you do see machinery or equipment down there, that's exactly what's going on. They're not starting a project that's not been approved, they're just going down there and doing some soil sampling. Frank DiMarco got up and talked about no more snow and potholes and things like that. I just want to kind of reiterate to everyone that those guys, the DPW crews, are going to be out there. They're on the main roads, they were on Columbus today. They're out there, and just for everyone to kind of slow down, maybe provide them a little more, you know, little, you know, courtesy that they, that they're out there, they're trying to help out the road. So, just kind of slow down and give them, give them what they need to do. And then maybe just a quick update on the budget process and what's been going on here. I know the department heads will say it, but I've kind of, I've given them a lot of work over the last month, as we've kind of, in the board, you've had a lot of work over the last month, looking at some of this stuff, where I've been continually asking questions and updates to the budgets, and we've really looked at every single line going forward. And I know that a lot of us spent a lot of time in one room this Saturday, going over each of those lines, and a lot of, a lot of big items that needed to be talked about, we're talking about, we're going through that. So, I just wanted to make everyone aware that there is another work session scheduled for Saturday, scheduled for Saturday, and the tentative budget will come out on March 20th. And at that point, obviously, the budget hearing was set for April 16th, and obviously, anyone can come out to the work sessions, email us some of their questions, concerns, what they want to see in their budget, and come out for the public hearing.
Well, thank you. Yeah, it was a long day Saturday. That's the longest work session I think we've ever had, budget work session. So, yes, we're well underway, and that brings us to miscellaneous business, which our next budget workshop, as you said, in chronological order here, is going to be this Saturday, March 14th. We have our annual village elections. Please, everyone, come on down and cast your vote. That is going to be on Wednesday, the day after St. Patrick's Day, that's Wednesday, March 18th, and everyone in the Village of Tuckahoe will be voting down at the Tuckahoe Community Center. Village offices will be closed on April 3rd, which is Good Friday, as Mr. DiMarco mentioned. DPW will not be working on that day also. Our reorganization meeting is going to be on April 6th, 2015. The village board budget hearing will be on April 13th, and we will have a special budget adoption meeting at the end of April, which is going to be on April 27th. And that is going to bring us to our Board of Trustees member reports, and we're going to start with Deputy Mayor Tom Giordano.
Thank you, Mayor Eklund. Let's see. Couple of things tonight. The first is that our next zoning board meeting will be held tomorrow evening at 7:30 p.m. The, sorry, Wednesday evening, that's right, Wednesday evening at 7:30 p.m. The work session immediately proceeds at 6:30 p.m.
The work session immediately proceeds at 6:30 p.m. Planning board meeting is coming up on March 17th at 7:30 p.m. I plan, as I did in the prior zoning board meeting, I plan on attending the planning board meeting just to get a sense as to how things are running, especially over these past, these past years where there are so many seminal, important projects that are going on in our village. And I will make a report in the following meeting after that. This, I find myself yet again on the virtual eve of a contested election with my esteemed colleague, trustee Luizy. As Mayor Eklund has said, I urge everyone to come out and vote on March 18th, which is strangely enough a Wednesday. Ordinarily, we have a Tuesday election this year. It will be on a Wednesday and it will be at the community board. I ask that everybody exercise their rights under this great country to vote. And I, as I've done in the prior three elections, I think this is nearly my fifth year having served, and my eighth year serving with the village, three years on the zoning board, a year as the chair of the zoning board, and then this, I think, is coming up on my fifth year on the board, reflect on why I'm doing this and I'm gonna share that with you briefly. I think the first things that come to mind are easy, to maintain the fiscal prudence that we, that we try to lend to the board, to craft sound policy, to keep, and most importantly, I think, to keep our village safe and beautiful and vibrant and affordable. Tonight reminded me as to why, because some of our meetings are short where we do kind of quotidian things that are, you know, just really keeping up with what needs to get done, busy work. Tonight, I think, showed, showed me some of the reasons why we really want to be here. We get to see things like everyday heroes doing important things every day. We had Mrs. Kamek here who came of her own volition to spread an important message that obviously resonated with everyone here in a very deep way. We get to see the scouts, people who dedicate themselves to service, who continually improve our village and they do it without asking anything in return. We got to hear from some living miracles. We have a couple left, but, so, I'm glad we had this meeting that we did because I think even though the room is cleared a bit since it started, we had a full room and we had a real vibrant hearing full of, or evening, full of interesting things and I think full of the reasons that we all are here. So, that's it.
Well said, well said. Actually, I agree with you too. Yes, very much so. Trustee Quigley.
Thank you, Mayor. As we noted, most of my part of the reports is maintained care of. Thank you, Swadys, for keeping the village and the community informed, all the wonderful things going at the library. And actually, I'm just gonna sort of dovetail a little bit on what trustee Giordano said is to note that we had two other scouts here tonight in addition to our potential Eagle Scout, who are here studying the process of our village board for their citizenship in the community merit badge. This is something all scouts must do on their way to Eagle Scout. You do citizenship in the community, citizenship in the nation, and then citizenship in the country. We're hoping that the exposure to these young guys as to see how the village operates will inspire them, maybe in the next generation to step in and be glad to take over our position. So, it's just great to see again the participation and the turnout we had tonight and I'm all set. Thanks.
Thank you. Great group there. Trustee Luizy.
Thank you, Mayor. My report will begin with the Toccoho seniors. I was quite impressed, I intended the general membership meeting on Tuesday. Since Jennifer Vetramill has taken over as director of the Toccoho seniors, the membership has increased to 165 members, which is quite a dramatic improvement in membership and that's no reflection on the former director Barbara Stires, who did a tremendous job down there for 13 years. But it just goes to show, you know, the initiative that she's taken since becoming a director down there and also what really benefited the Toccoho seniors was the move to Father Fata Hall at Assumption Church, I'm sorry. So, with that, she has introduced this new program, which is a calligraphy series, which is being donated thanks to the generosity of a Keller Williams. So, this is a new program that they've just begun, it's gonna take off this month and I believe the program is already full because it's only, it's limited to 10 seniors. So, that's, I'm really looking forward to see the results of that new program. The seniors will also be celebrating St. Patrick's Day as they do every year at everyone's favorite Irish pub, Rory Dolan's, on Thursday, March 12th. And once again, as they have done in the past, the Toccoho seniors will also begin a food drive to benefit the E-CAP Emergency Food Pantry Program. So, if you can, stop by the Toccoho Senior Center on Tuesdays or Thursdays at Father Fata Hall. And moving along to the Toccoho History Committee. Right now, they are working on two veteran scrapbooks that they have recently received. One of the scrapbooks contains photos and articles from the Spanish-American War and the other scrapbook has pictures from going back to World War I. As always, please, if you can, visit the, excuse me, the History Committee on the second floor of Village Hall. They're here on Wednesdays, but of course, you know, they have a display here throughout the second floor here. The diorama of the Marble Quarry is on display here as well. And to dovetail with our first presentation earlier this evening, Eagle Scout James Talata's project is going to be enhanced by the History Committee's donation of a framed covelette, which is now on display at the Toccoho Community Center. That's all I have, Mayor.
Well, thank you very much. Trustee Alfassi.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to let everyone know that we are going to start and we have attentively scheduled on April 8th, a committee that is made up of myself, David Burke, the village administrator, Ron Gallo, who is our chair of our zoning board, our planning board chair, our building department representatives, and we're going to look, start looking again at some of the items in our zoning ordinance where we can tweak some things, add some definitions, get rid of things that we don't need to try to make the ordinance a little more user-friendly for everyone here in Toccoho. Some examples are, we're going to take a look at, doesn't mean what I'm about to say doesn't mean we're in favor or against it, but maybe changing the floor area ratio to not include basements in your home. Section 4.1, which is the rear yard section, front yard section, some definitions there. Buffer zones, buffer zones should be, should they or should they not be in all residential zones? Parking, do you know right now that if you have a driveway, like I do, in my front yard, I'm technically not allowed to park in my driveway because it's part of the front yard? So, that's something that probably needs to be cleaned up. Thank goodness the chief doesn't enforce that to watch. And we'll make changes maybe to our fence law, what is appropriate, what's not appropriate, and some other definitions. But most importantly, what I'd like to announce is, please, we all live here. You may have come across an instance where you found something in the zoning ordinance accidentally because you were in violation of it or because you wanted to do something, make a change that you had to go before the zoning board and you felt like perhaps you shouldn't have to do that. Please call up the village clerk's office, leave a message, I'll be happy to talk with you about any topic that you'd like to present to this committee and we'll consider it. And then before anything is done, we'll have a robust debate and I know my colleagues don't agree on some of the things that I've talked about and that's good. We'll have robust debate, we'll have it open to the public, a public hearing on it, and then perhaps move forward on some changes to our zoning ordinance. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Well, that's good and thank you for spearheading that. It's long overdue and well needed too, for sure. My report, I always say, is gonna be brief, but tonight it's not. First thing I want to do is I want to start off talking about the fiscal stress report that was recently in the news. At last month's board meeting, I reported that when the New York State Controller's Office released their annual fiscal stress monitoring report, that we would be on the list. The list came out about two weeks ago and as I anticipated, we were on that list. In determining who gets the fiscal stress rating, the primary indicator that the state looks at is a municipality's fund balance, or what I always call our savings account balance. A municipality should work towards keeping about 5% to 10% in fund balance and for us, that's roughly $500,000 to $1 million. The purpose of the monitoring that the state does is so that they can watch municipalities and school districts to make sure that while we're all doing our best to stay within this 2% tax cap, that we don't use up all of our fund balance to accomplish staying in the 2% tax cap. I want to explain again this month the primary reason why we ended up on that list. When we closed our books on May 31st of last year, 2014, we had a much lower than anticipated fund balance and this was due to projects and tax archearies that we paid for with the anticipation of borrowing to pay them back. We intentionally held off in borrowing in order to capture most of the cost for the projects that were being completed, but unfortunately, the Controller's Office takes a snapshot of your fund balance only once and that's at the end of your fiscal year and they don't take into account the fact that we just borrowed in December, January, $1 million to replenish the money that we had spent and that was pre-planned. So, our fund balance is at the level that we wanted to achieve during our budget process and as an added measure of caution during our budget process for the budget that we're in now, we didn't account for some of the large building fees that have come in and that's gonna actually shore up and add a little bit to our fund balance. But unfortunately for us, what also hits us on the expense side of the balance sheet was a huge unexpected increase in our workers' comp and liability insurance premium. So, we're closely monitoring this to make sure that we stay in that 5% to 10% window of fund balance and we are definitely more cautious in making sure that whenever possible, when we're, when we're gonna be doing some more long-term financial planning for projects, including funding them before they're completed, which is important. So, over the past year, we've also started and completed some capital projects. Some of these were emergency-based and all of which were not included in our standard budget processing since they're projects that provide a benefit to the community over the long term. Projects like these require us to go out for long-term borrowing and with the near 0% interest rates that we're currently seeing, it's a good time for us to borrow for these needed jobs. So, I just want to give an example of some of the projects that we've undertaken. The first is the Main Street Parking Lot ADA Sidewalk Project, which was done across the street. Then we had the Oak Avenue Parking Lot Restoration Project, that was a huge project that we did. The Depot Square Island Upgrade Project, which was done around the holidays. The Lincoln Avenue Marble Dale Road Pedestrian Intersection Safety Project. The only work we've done so far with that capital improvement project is we've done a little bit of design work. We've hired, I think we did a, might have done a survey at that intersection and we're just starting to get underway with some of the engineering analysis for that. A very big project that we did was the Hollywood Avenue Flooding Mitigation Project. We undertook a huge project up there, which we did and we chose to do it right on the heels of the United Waters project that they were doing up there and it was a good opportunity for us to do the project because we ended up getting a free paving project out of that. So, we went in and did the work that we had to do. Road was paved on somebody else's dime and it was a project that was well-needed for many, many years. Another project we're gonna be starting is the Columbus Avenue MTA Retaining Wall Stabilization Project. Anyone who parks along Columbus Avenue where the Crestwood Train Station is, years ago, you may remember that part of that wall collapsed and we had cones up there for the longest time and we have issues with MTA to, as to, well, first of all, we tried to get them to fix it, but, you know, that didn't go too far. So, we're gonna have to go ahead and at some point, do the restoration project there. There is permission issues, you're working close to MTA's tracks, but we're establishing that as a capital improvement project and we're gonna get ready to go ahead and look for that. That's probably gonna be a long-term project there. We have another large tax archery settlement that's in the pipe coming down that we're gonna also be borrowing for. So, these are projects that we're gonna be borrowing for, some of these we've actually done. So, like we just did in the last ban, we backfilled our fund balance. We'll be doing that again this, late this spring and it's all in the spirit of making sure that we just maintain a good, healthy fund balance and we make sure that when we're gonna undertake a project, and that's one of the primary purposes of having the village administrators, to keep us on track, to make sure that if we're gonna go ahead and do a project, we plan for it, we plan for not only how the work is gonna get done, whether it has to go out to bid or whether it's a project we're gonna do in-house, but how we're gonna fund for it. And it's a decision that we will make collectively as a board and if it's a long-term capital improvement project that's gonna affect our community for many years down the road, then I'm certain that we'll be borrowing the funds for it so the repayment is done over a period of time. So, you know, the sky's not falling, like the newspapers seem to led people to believe and things are very fiscally sound here in the village of Toccoho. One other thing I want to talk about and this is, maybe it's gonna be surprising news to some people, but to a lot of people, it's not. As we know, next week, we're gonna be holding our village elections. As we talked about here, there's being no opposition for mayor, I will be serving in this office for another two years. Thank you very much. If somebody comes out, I'm gonna vote for myself, so I'll be here for two more years. So, one of the responsibilities of the mayor is to make appointments at our annual reorganization meeting, which is gonna be on April 6th. One of our most treasured employees will not be staying on with us after the end of this month. Our village clerk, Susan Chimera, has been the foundation of our village government office for nearly 50 years now, if you can believe that. Anyone who's met Susan would have a hard time believing this since she looks younger than everyone in this room, I'll say that much. A few years back, Susan retired, however, at the urging of the former mayor and myself, she decided to stay on part-time a few days a week until we transitioned to the current form of government we now have, which is having a full-time village administrator. In her time here, Susan wore many hats. She saw tremendous changes in her little village and she always made time for volunteer service with her beautification committee. Susan has carried herself with more modesty and class than you will ever find in another person and I am personally glad to have had the opportunity to have worked with her and more importantly, learned from her for the past 11 years. I promised Susan that I would not embarrass her with all the pomp and circumstance that she has rightfully earned, but I just want to take this opportunity to humbly just say thank you very much to Susan. So, with that, I'll let some of the board members who may want to humbly say a few words for Susan also. We'll start with Tom.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I'd just like to echo, I think Mayor Eklund put it very well. It is amazing to have put 50 years of service into anything and the way Susan has done it as a consummate professional with deep knowledge, probably the most knowledge you could find of, you know, of anyone in the village and her dedication to this village over all those years. Congratulations on a job well done.
Congratulations on a job well done. Camille, you have some big shoes to fill, but I know you can fill them. You are also highly capable, just not as long-serving, yet. I wish Susan all the best as she figures out how to devote her time and talents moving forward. Congratulations.
Thank you. Trustee Quigley.
Thank you, Mayor. When I was first appointed to the board seven years ago now, Mayor Fitzpatrick said, "If you need to know anything, just ask Susan." Everybody else comes and goes, she's there, and she was always so gracious and knowledgeable, and was just a great resource for me over these past several years. And she's retiring as graciously as she conducted her job, and we wish her the best, and we welcome Camille officially into the hot seat pretty soon.
Trustee Luizzi.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, you know, I always get to follow you guys that always say what I'm going to say, so I have to say it differently, I guess. 50 years, I guess, if to put that in perspective, I was 16 years old when she started, or thereabouts. But not to embarrass Susan on seriously. Any of my conversations with Susan throughout the past four years about affairs in the village or information that I needed, it was always, 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 always in the best interest of the village. She truly had the interest of this village in her heart. And as we have said many times over the past few years with employees that have come and gone, I think the village, I know the village is a much better place because of Susan Chimera. She's going to be missed, but as my colleague, Deputy Mayor Giordano, said, Camille, way to go.
Thank you. Steve Alfassi.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, it's hard to top what everyone said, but I'm not trying to top anyone. But we'll say this. For the years that I've lived here in Tuckahoe, and for the short time I was on the zoning board and here now as a trustee, I'd also asked the question, "What do we do here? Is this allowed? Can we do this?" The answer would be, you know who would know? Phil White. All right. I'd call Phil, or Phil would be outside here on Wednesdays, and then when Phil didn't know the answer, Susan was the one to go to. So even Phil White defers to Susan. But Susan, thank you so much. And most importantly, I think, not is Susan's service to the village of Tuckahoe, but what a wonderful person she truly is. If you know her, and you've dealt with her, you've met her, you've had any sort of interaction with Susan, you know she's a kind, wonderful woman, and thank you so much for being that for the village of Tuckahoe.
And fortunately for us, you know, she's not moving. She's going to continue on with her work in the beautification committee. She's going to be doing some traveling. She told me about some of her travel plans, and boy, I wish I could retire. Fantastic. So she's going to be doing some volunteer work for the Westchester County, too. So we're going to see an awful lot of Susan certainly out at some of the beautification projects, and I'm sure she'll come to some of our meetings, too. But I want to congratulate our current deputy clerk, who is going to become our village clerk, which is Camille DeSalvo, and Jackie Ferretti is going to be appointed as our deputy village clerk, and she's sitting here tonight as well. So I want to congratulate you in advance. That will actually occur at the April reorganization meeting. With that, I don't know if anybody else wanted to say a word about Susan?
I just want to say congratulations to Susan also. I've been here seven years, and rightfully so. And anytime I had a question that needed to be answered, Susan was there, and everyone always led me to Susan. But she's always been helpful. She's always gave me the opportunity to sit down and speak to her anytime I had a question or a problem, and she's always guided me along the way. But congratulations, and I hope she enjoys her retirement. And welcome to both of you.
Anybody else? I'm sure we'll have some things to say at our reorganization meeting. So Susan, I know you're home watching, and I just want you to know that I did my best to try not to, I promised you when I said I'm not going to, first I said I was going to embarrass you if you didn't come to this meeting, but then I said, "I promise I would never do that." And again, from the bottom of my heart, I want to thank you for all the service that you provided for us as residents and as colleagues working for the village.
Mayor, can I just, I have my math is terrible. I was 12 years old when she started. Just for the record.
Sixth grade, okay, all right.
Just wanted to say that. Sorry, Susan.
Boy, now she feels really good, huh? Well, that's going to bring us to the second opportunity to address this board on anything you'd like to talk about at all tonight. And since I hear crickets out in the field, if there's no other business tonight, I will ask for a motion to adjourn this meeting.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Till next time, Tuckahoe. Have a very good evening.